So I'm gonna call this meeting to order. You ready, Katie? I'm sorry?
Uh. Not quite there yet.
Okay, alright. Uh, do you...
Roll call?
Yeah. I just, I wasn't sure.
Myers?
Here.
Vogel?
Go ahead.
I'm just going down the line. Roa?
Here.
McKnight?
Here.
Kinder?
Here. And then I will do pledge allegiance. I'm trying to do that, it looks so slow. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Katie, do you want me to...
Nope, you're good.
Good?
Okay.
Uh, we're gonna start with public comment. Bill? Uh, I think these are not... Oh, these are non-agenda items. Hold on one sec.
Sorry.
So, no public comment until the end. Sorry, Bill.
Sorry.
We're ready. We have plenty of minutes. Uh, notice of executive session meetings.
Uh, Your Honor, no executive sessions have been held recently.
Uh, Your Honor, I, before we get too far into the agenda, I just wanted to note that three items have been removed from the agenda that was posted online. Um, there were just some issues that we needed to work out prior to, uh, having those on the agenda.
Um, okay, well... Alright, those are pension.
Pension and the two motions to exonerate the city treasurer for real estate and for tax.
Got it. Um, notice of, or we already did that. Approval of minutes, January 4th, 2023. Regular meeting minutes?
Motion. Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Uh, McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Uh, communications?
Uh, Your Honor, there are no communications.
Um, council's subcommittee reports. Oh, manager's report, I'm sorry.
Uh, so the only item on that is what Gary Johnson had referred, uh, sent you an email about earlier. Uh, this would be at bed and breakfast, um, which will need to go before the zoning hearing board. This is on Highland Avenue. Um, council does not have to take a stance on whether or not they would or were not be supportive of, of approval by the zoning, uh, hearing board. But they can, if you wish, take a stance on that.
And that's the, the place is getting ready to be sold. It was a bed and breakfast before.
Correct.
And, and because it, it has been out of commission over a year, it has to be re-approved.
Correct.
Did anyone wanna give their approval or not approval?
I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, not that...
We'll pass that on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, okay, sorry about that. Uh, council's subcommittee reports. Housing and economic development. Um, besides the, uh, rental registry and, uh, inspection program being passed last, uh, in, in December. Um, I don't think there's anything new that we're working on at this point, as of yet. Um, but... Uh, we do have, I think, what we're talking about the bed the ordinance for the bed and breakfast later. Uh, the third reading to the...
Rooming house?
Yeah, the ordinance for the rooming house. That'll be the only thing. Community engagement?
Um, I don't think anything new from community engagement. Just waiting for directive from our group on priorities for a year. So, uh, hopefully we can continue that conversation.
Uh, finance?
Continued number crunching on EMS.
Gretchen, do you have anything? Okay. Um, old business discussion, EMS.
Uh, so, Your Honor, this was a request made at the last week's study session that this be a standing item on council's agenda. I do not have anything specifically, um, to talk about at this moment, but it will remain a standing item on the agenda.
Um, do you mind if I ask, Jim? What, what more numbers are, are you crunching? I know that, uh, Marion gave us numbers, right? And then, um, we had some new numbers. And then we had some, um, new monies coming or new, new amounts given by Medicaid, Medicare, right? Um, is there, what, what other numbers are we...
Okay, so there, there was some confusion.
Sure.
We received, I believe, everybody received copies of the, uh, figures from Warren. They did, didn't they?
Yeah, I think we've had them. And then we got them again, correct?
And those varied from our own calculations. Uh, so we had to investigate that. We found out the difference is Warren only does BLS and we would probably be looking at doing BLS and ALS both, which would have a, a difference. There's also the issue of insurance. And what happens if insurance companies, for some reason, don't pay? And that's, we have not been able to pinpoint as to how much variance that would be on, on our projections. Like, would it modify them 10%, 20%, 30%? We don't know at this point in time. So that would pretty much...
Be what your, what numbers? Marion, did you not have numbers for people who don't pay? That, didn't you guys, I mean, I think that you guys put in that, that insurance companies that don't pay?
That's different. But it's people who don't pay is one category.
Yeah.
The people who's, who would pay because they have insurance, but their insurance modifies the amount or refuses to pay. That's a, another factor.
That's a whole number. And we haven't... We don't know what, like, any, anything about those numbers or...
Um, you know, to be quite honest, I would turn this over to Evan Cardash, uh, to make any statements on that. Cause he helped provide some of those numbers.
Do we have, uh, like, a ballpark as to what, what Jim is talking about? Cause it's, that's a...
So where that is a possibility of things that could happen, that becomes more on the documentation side. Um, anytime that something is done and not documented correctly, that insurance company can send it back, just like we're going to a doctor's appointment if you were getting something done and it wasn't, uh, taken care of. That is where, uh, the documentation side, on the fire department, we do the QA, QI process, make sure that's all there. Every chart, even now, when we run our QRS level, we make sure that those are reviewed, even though we don't bill them, to make sure that everything is done. Because it could be as simple as a, a grammatical error or something that, you know, looks like a wrong dosage on something, which, you know, we, we all have typos. But those are the things that it goes into. Where we see that those are non-payees for insurance, it normally is with those cases. Um, there's very few times when we're having, especially Medicare, Medicaid, uh, where if it is documented under the reason and giving that true reason for transport, showing medical necessity, um, that they are paying out what they need to.
So you're saying that, that unless we've made a mistake, the insurance companies do pay?
Yeah, if we're documenting correctly, if we're covering everything, if we are showing that medical need for transport, what we did to make sure that person got to the hospital, explaining why they could not take themselves to the hospital and needed EMS care, um, that's where that gets in.
If there's no transport, if, if someone needs transport but refuses it, as I understand it, we don't get reimbursed. Is that correct?
Correct. There is, uh, some places do treatment, no transport, um, like for diabetics, where you're doing intervention. Oftentimes, people are just getting, um, assessed for something like a car accident. Uh, but that's kinda where that other side of the motor vehicle accident billing has come in and helped us with that part. Um, and then really, the only other one where we see that is the Lyft assist category, where we don't have that. Uh, but there's very few times that it, that happens where they're not being transported. You know, normally when people are calling 911, they are needing to go to the hospital. It's normally a third-party report or a diabetic. And we see a lot of those times that they're not being transported.
In QRS, we cannot get billed or cannot be reimbursed by insurance companies, is that correct?
Correct. Correct.
And Evan, would you touch on the commercial insurance? Typically, it's billed, billed higher. And we've assumed in our numbers that we are going to get a lesser amount?
Yes. Uh, so, just in some brief conversations with some, uh, billing agencies that we've had, as well as looking at other numbers, for commercial insurance, really for any number, you're looking at billing for a BLS trip, like the $800 to $900 range. And an ALS trip is like $1,100 to $1,200. Um, what we expect to get back out of that is, I, boy, don't know if I have my numbers here, but I think it was $600 for BLS and $800 for ALS. Um, that is showing that they're gonna have some of that. Or even if it's like a doctor's office, they're billing higher and you're not always getting that full number back. Um, those numbers, it's not like we're throwing out a high number. Those are numbers that have been accepted across the board as what we can bill to get our assumed amount as needed moving forward.
Okay. Um, just a, a quick question on the, um, on the insurance companies, when they don't pay. And we establish it's, it's just like an error and it may just take longer time. But, so could we establish numbers with the rate of human error?
Yeah.
Right? Like, you know, we know the rate of human error is whatever, right? So could we create those numbers with just the rate of human error?
You could. I think it would be hard to, uh, put a solid number to that.
Right, that's what I mean.
Just because in all actuality, our goal is to eliminate that human error.
Right.
With what we're doing in the QA, QI process is to make sure that any trip that is billable, that we are having something where they're needing taken to the hospital, is to eliminate that part of it. Why, we bring everything together, go through any sort of a QA, QI process, have the administrative staff in place to make sure that those things don't have it.
Okay. And then, let, last question, I said. The, um, uh, Jim brought up a good point and you, you said a, a good point with, um, Lyft assists, right? Um, we, we say Lyft assists because they don't get, a lot of times, they don't get transported. But at this point, we do all the Lyft assists, right?
Correct.
Like, the, the fire department does Lyft assists. That's something we do no matter what. No one else does that, it's us.
Correct.
It's already paid for, you know, we pay for it with the taxes as is, right? Like, it's not like the ambulance service does that. So that's not a new, a new amount of money that comes?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's what, uh, we handled yesterday alone. It was four of them that we did. Um, that's just part of what we're trying to do to make sure it's there and, um, making sure that everyone gets the help that they need.
Sure. And that's around, what, like, 300 Lyft assists that we do a year?
Yeah, right around 300.
Okay, so that, and again, that's already in our budget. That's what we do. And it's, that's what the fire department does. So it's not something that would be added in and be an extra cost?
Correct.
I just, I, it, you know, cause I, I think that a lot of people think that when we say that 300 Lyft assists and then you don't get paid for, for transport, that, that that is a new cost, right? And that's 300 non-transport, so we're gonna do what we already do it. So it's not...
And that's where it's been talked about, the, you know, state of readiness, you know?
Right.
And that's where having us and having our current budget kind of allows us to have that, shoulder that burden that some of the other volunteer agencies weren't able to.
Sure. Lyft assists are not included in the fee schedule.
That's correct. So what we would have to do if we wanted to end up charging for Lyft assists, there are some boundaries that we'd have to follow. Um, Warren does, uh, a fee for over, I think it's gradual, right? So like between 3 and 5, 3 to 7, something like that, you're charged a certain amount. And as you call more Lyft assists, that, that fee increases.
Sure.
That would be something that council would have to discuss and set. Um, but we can certainly move forward with that, um, that discussion.
But again, that would be something new.
Correct.
Does anybody have any other questions? Um, Jim, what do you think the, I'm sorry, did you re-say something?
Um, go ahead, I can...
Um, what do you think the timeline would be for you to crunch the numbers? Just so, because I, I wanna get this discussed and then I want to move, right? Um, and at least, uh, get a vote on the, on the books, right? We're, we're, we're talking numbers here. We're talking, um, you know, just so it's not on our agenda for the rest of the year. We wanna, we wanna make a move here. Uh, what, what are you thinking?
I'm, I'm looking at...
Yeah, no, you're looking, I see Tim, it's this triangle here.
Are the numbers gonna change between now and 30 days?
No, I, I mean, we have some numbers. Uh, you've estimated some costs. There are some costs that, like capital costs, we did not include in that, which again, will, uh...
I think we can refine those a little bit more detail.
We can do that. We can add in the monies that the city currently has in form of grants and capital, um, to reflect any, any of that.
And then, and then the other expenses on top of that?
And we have been focused mostly on the operating cost to see if it's a viable venture.
Okay.
So, Tim?
Within a couple of weeks, we could get those numbers together, at least minimum, probably.
So...
I don't know if you think it's gonna be quicker?
Maybe by the second week, uh, meeting in February?
I think we could have it by February 1st.
Yep.
So the first meeting in February?
Okay, that's two weeks.
How do, how does everybody feel about that?
To, to... Wait?
Yeah, to wait and then, and then get it, let's, let's get voted and, and go to...
Yeah, I think it's...
Yeah, no, I think that that sounds good. So just to clarify, right, we've got operating costs. We've got those numbers now. What, it sounds like, Jim, you're looking for is kind of startup, like what the kind of capital fusion...
Yeah, because, I mean, the minimum of an ambulance is, is such to wear out. Um, there's ongoing capital needs.
Sure. And there, and some of that, I think, was built into the numbers that we saw. So we see maintenance, um, auto-pot, same fuel cost, but, but the initial fusion, sure.
Maintenance, my, maintenance is usually more routine than expense item as opposed to a capital item, but, yeah. I'm talking about the really expensive things, like if you had to buy a new ambulance.
So it's included in that? So it's not calculated as a brand-new ambulance? Um, but it is calculated to set aside a reserve fund per the suggestion of our, our solicitor, Tim, uh, Walker, to include a reserve fund.
Right.
Uh, so every year.
Twenty thousand a year.
Yeah.
So, um, but just, just so that we know specifically what we're looking for, so that we know when we've gotten it, when we're like ready to move on to the next phase, we're looking for that kind of startup, that, the capital cost for, for starting up the ambulance service. We've got a sense of what operating will, will cost ongoing.
Now, at the, at the same time, I would, I would suggest that since Medicare and Medicaid have increased their reimbursements, the pressure is off ambulance providers throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And our local provider has agreed not to change anything for a year.
Right.
So, that might be a, an argument to delay, to, to work on implementing, if that's what you wanna do. But it doesn't have to be implemented in, you know, like a matter of a few weeks, because we have a year.
Yeah.
And I think it would be equitable to all parties concerned, uh, if you're going to go that way to have a, a smooth transition, into, into a program. And there've been suggestions made that would even give us the opportunity to see how it would be working on a, on a trial basis, which might be a very good idea.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, Jim. Um, like, we do have some of that breathing room. Um, at least in terms of, right, billing rights and, and, and what our, the existing service provider, um, is, is asking of municipalities. I think what that doesn't address for me is some of what I heard from our, our and our other firefighters, um, in the town hall that we had. Like, those still feel like real concerns that aren't necessarily, um...
Another question, I'm sorry. Another question to consider with this is, if the city should take over ALS and BLS, um, would that eliminate the need or greatly reduce the need for QRS? And that would have implications on manpower requirements?
He always...
So the QRS being not the primary need on an ambulance call currently, we are going just in providing assistance. Our, our primary function at this moment is fire and rescue responsibilities within the city. And so our manpower staffing allows that. Even when we go out on QRS calls, if other ones come in, as soon as someone else assumes patient care, we take off to handle the fire rescue emergency. Um, and so it really doesn't change our, our manpower needs to handle the fire rescue. It kind of realigns some of that, that the QRS service then becomes our, our EMS model is the ALS, BLS transportable. And then the, the manpower kind of gets re-divided, still maintaining that, uh, minimum level of staffing that we've had for fire rescue emergencies.
This is the first I've heard of the trial basis? Like, is this a conversation that earns us just an idea that someone said?
What does it look like to hire people, like, on a trial basis? Like, how do you, I can't be...
So this is, you have heard this, you have heard this. This was Eric, uh, the ambulance providers', um, first suggestion, I think, when the town hall happened. It was to house an ambulance, um, one of the ambulances from that provider in the fire station.
Oh, okay.
And then city staff, city firefighters would run backup, um, to that. So you have heard that.
Okay, when I heard chart, that's not what I pictured. Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? I was picturing they...
We try our own for, yeah, a period of time.
Yeah, okay. So that's, thanks for clarifying that, that was said.
Um, okay, so we're saying at the next meeting, we will have this kind of startup capital numbers and we will be ready for a vote for discussion?
That's what I was, I was hoping for, that we would be ready for a vote, to, to get this...
Whether or not you want to vote is up to council.
I would be ready to vote at the next meeting.
I mean, as long as we have those numbers and, and Jim feels comfortable with getting the numbers, you know, with Jim and Tim.
I'm not ready to vote, but that's... I, I think that we need more time to consider this, because it's going to represent an expenditure money.
Yeah.
And, and it's gonna represent an increase in personnel. And the most unkind thing you can do to somebody is hire them and say, a year later, the program's not working. We, we can't keep, that's not fair to anybody.
Is that, is that, you're saying that a trial basis is not something that you would like to do?
A tri, I, I'm willing to go with a trial basis. Uh, the owner of Medell ambulance had, had offered us the ambulance to keep in the station and what, we would be using it when they were out of service, which was a certain period of time. I don't remember what it was. Marion, do you recall the hours?
Um, they would be primarily in the evening hours.
Yeah.
But even for that, we would probably need another person. So that's hiring a trial person. So that, that's what I, why I said that is because you said having somebody, hiring somebody in a year, you were saying would not be job.
I don't know if we could temporarily fill that in with some of our part-timers or not. I have no idea how that would work.
We'd have to, we'd have to take a look at that and see what that would like to...
Yeah, you'd have to look at who certified the handle of calls.
But we would need more, more people just to even do a trial.
The staffing plan would change.
Yeah. Okay.
So, like, procedurally, like, if we were to vote, is that on a resolution that, uh, okay?
It's like one or the other, right?
Is it a resolution? Or is it like, here's the consensus of council is to move in a particular direction?
I, I think we'd be looking for consensus at, at that point, rather than...
And further develop the...
Whichever way we're going.
No, because it's an expenditure, then it'd be an actual, as opposed to important.
I guess the thing that would weigh Jim's concern on the other side is I feel like we're at this point in time where there's a lot of momentum to move ahead. There's a lot of, um, energy and solid, like, uh, I just feel like it's, like, solid teamwork from, with the fire department, um, and staff. And so that would be the thing that, that is the way, that weighs for me that, you know, that we're, if we, in a year, everyone's like, oh, we're this, we're so tired of this. You guys, you're, you're not gonna decide. You know how it is. Everyone's like, oh, God, here we go again. So that weighs on me, I gotta say.
Right, the momentum of that.
That, yeah. Yeah.
I, I give it that.
I dip my toe in the water, I don't.
Right?
I give that to you.
So I guess staff would just be looking for direction from council on, on how you wanted to handle that first meeting in February? If you wanted it to just be a discussion? If you wanted it to be some sort of consensus?
Well, I, I mean, in... Discussion to consensus?
We better have a short agenda.
We could do a motion to move forward. Um, it wouldn't be a, a resolution or an ordinance, but at least so that there's a, a vote on the table.
It gives, I think, all the staff the directive that they would need one way or the other. And, and also let us know too, right? What our work is gonna look like for the year, right? As we're... Yeah.
So we need a motion?
Not tonight, not at the...
That's next.
That's the question for council, is that, is that...
We're, we're entering back question right now.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, um, I know that I want to start, whichever way we're going, we want to start moving, right? Um, we do have to plan for the citizens of Medell and I, I don't think, um, you know, putting it off more and more, if numbers aren't gonna change, if, if, if things aren't gonna change, then, then alls we're doing is, is, uh, cutting the legs out from under this, this movement, whichever way we go, right? We need to make sure that we are, um, we're pushing forward, right? Otherwise, we're gonna be talking about this all year, putting other things off that, that, you know, other priorities off, right? Um, and, uh, I wanna make sure that we are covered, whichever way we go and we are, we are, you know, I mean, doing this as a, as a body. Uh, so I, um, if, if we wanna go with a consensus to, or a vote to, um, you know, start that, I think we should do that the first week, right? We should at least be moving forward instead of sitting in the same place. I think somebody said if you're not moving forward, you're moving backwards, right? So, um, let's keep on moving forward, um, on whatever we're doing. Is that, is that good enough or not?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Discussion motion, appoint council liaisons to ABCs.
So at the last meeting of council, at the study session, we, staff was directed to create a survey, send that survey out, and council members could elect which of the ABCs you wanted to be a liaison to. We did receive most everybody's responses. So just to recap those, Mayor was Housing, the Meadville Area Recreation Authority, Zoning Hearing Board, Market Authority, Autumn, the Environmental Advisory Committee, Planning and Zoning, Zoning Hearing Board. Gretchen was Housing Authority, Meadville Area Recreation Authority, Meadville Area Water Authority. And Jim was the Meadville Area Sewer Authority, Meadville Area Water Authority, and the Redevelopment Authority. I don't know, Larry, did you have a preference on?
You know, with my work schedule, I hate to schedule, do a committee, you guys meet during the day.
That's fair.
And I don't want to be involved and not be able to attend.
I think we said we don't have to be at the meetings necessarily, but just to go through the appointment process is like the, probably the.
Well, housing, I'm definitely interested in housing.
And then we said, I only pick three, because it said to only pick a set of them. So I think we were saying, if we split through, like if we take three, that covers everything.
And I think I said I'd do whatever needed to be done, you know, if, if there was things that nobody wanted.
So what's not covered right now?
So it looks like beautification. Civil Service Board.
I thought Jim's.
No. You're not on that, Jim, I thought by default or something in my head.
No, that was the default.
I thought there was something here, the mayor was or something, yeah.
Oh, that's pension, the pension board.
Oh, it's pension, okay.
Jamie.
Code Appeals Board. Shade Tree Commission, and Streetscape.
Mary Ann, could you put maybe, Larry, on the ones that, that, like the, the ones, the, the code?
Sure.
Do you know what I mean? Because that's only, depends on if, if somebody has a.
Right.
Do you know what I mean? Like something that it's not is, is.
What?
Do you, we can just go down the list and, because there were some overlaps on some of these.
And we only need one per.
That's correct.
So we're going to go down the list of ABCs.
Correct. First one is.
This is fun.
Send this out, Ryan.
Anyone want to join in?
First one is Beautification Committee.
Oh, I got it.
All right.
Well, is, does anyone have to have any of these? Can we just, like, is anybody, you know, one, on one of these hills here, like the, do you know what I mean? Like the.
Why don't they just go down, filling, filling it in, this one?
Okay, then I would just like, you know, just give everybody.
Civil Service Board.
I'll do that.
Code Appeals Board.
I'll do that.
Environmental Advisory Council, I believe Autumn was the only one to mark that on her priorities.
I'm already the liaison, so I didn't know.
Yeah.
Doubled up for some reason?
Housing Authority, there were multiple.
I, I would like that. Is that okay?
What an arm wrestle.
Market Authority?
I'll do that one. Is that okay, or do you want that one?
No.
You just looked at me. Was it true you wanted that?
Jamie and Gretchen, you both selected the Meadville Area Recreation Authority.
I just liked it because it was in the morning. Because I just come there.
If you want, yeah.
I'll do that.
Jim was the only one to select the Sewer Authority.
Okay.
Jim was also the only one to, oh, no, Gretchen, you selected the Water Authority as well.
She's very strong.
Jim, you want to do that?
Yeah, I'll do Water.
Planning and Zoning Commission, Autumn, I believe you were the only one to select that. Redevelopment Authority, Jim was the only one. Shade Tree Commission.
How would you? In this, well, I have all the fun ones, I'm sorry, I'm like the trees.
Again, this is just how, how quickly is, does somebody need to, you know what I mean, like?
That's a very, that's one's very rare, if that one comes up.
So again, I wasn't sure, maybe the rare ones you'd like to, to.
Not shade tree.
Not shade.
I only had Gretchen down for two at this.
I'll do shade tree.
Streetscape Committee?
Streetscape's another rare one because four of the five members are appointed from other city bodies. So it's only one member that you ever have to worry about.
Rare in terms of appointment?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that you would need, is that something you would do?
You would not have to attend those.
You don't have to.
I can handle it.
Lastly, the Zoning Hearing Board, Jamie and Autumn both selected that.
How many do I have? Do I have my three?
Jamie, I only have two.
Okay.
All right.
I want the pension and the two, Autumn, so.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
At least not nearly as difficult. Oh, so.
We're done.
Okay, so now we have the, that slate.
Motion to appoint.
So we have, we need a motion, right?
Correct.
Discussion? Feel like we did? Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Rua.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kendra.
All right. Ordinance, third and final reading, update to the rooming house and bed and breakfast ordinance. An ordinance, the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, amending ordinance number 2491 of 1960, as amended and titled the Rooming House and Bed and Breakfast Code, renaming the code the Rooming House Dormitory and Bed and Breakfast Code, and to incorporate such other changes as to include dormitories within the code, providing for severalability, a repealer, and an effective date.
Okay, can I have a motion to pass?
Second.
Discussion?
There have been no substantial updates since the last time this was discussed.
Very interesting.
Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Rua.
No.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kendra.
Aye.
New business discussion, Crawford Central School District busing.
Yeah, at our last meeting with councilmember comments, I spoke about the situation I feel that's come because of the school bus company that was hired in Crawford County. My concern is that I've had a lot of parents, students, coming to me with questions as to what's going on. Why are the students not being picked up on time? Why are students being left out in the cold, in the rain? Why are students being let off buses and parking lots? It's, it's not being handled fair, and it's, it's been that way since day one. When they came, they signed a contract to provide service. They haven't done that. Some people may be wondering, why am I saying it? Because it's a concern for residents, the taxpayers. We're paying a bill, and here we have a company that was outbid it. But here they are doing the job that this other company is supposed to be doing. My concern, and I know council doesn't have the power to force or to even make them come to the table. But I feel that council should write a letter of inquiry or definitely inquire as to why they're not fulfilling their contract that they signed with, with our school district and that our taxpayers are paying the money for. I don't think it's something that we ought to take lightly. As I said, it's been going on since September. Here it is now, a new year, and Hubbard Bus is still picking up their routes. There's more to it, that they have unsafe drivers, as, as far as there's been accidents, there's. And it's not being caused by other drivers, it's the bus drivers themselves are not safe. Their kids are being hurt on the bus. As I stated, they're getting home late. It's, it's affected families. Parents have to get up earlier to take their kids to school. They're missing work or being late for work. It's, how long are we going to let them take advantage of the contract that they're supposed to be upholding? And I think city council, I would hope that city council as a whole would say, you know, let's, let's find out, let's get some answers for the residents of Meadville.
This is, who, who approved that, that contract, that school board, right?
That's the school board.
And then has, has this gone as a, as a something, you know, that parents have been going to school board meetings and calling?
The next one is the 23rd, I believe it is, and I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, parents are there. But even so, but I, like I say, I'm getting people that are approaching me on the street. But even so, people pay their taxes here, so I feel that that is purpose enough for us to be involved, not along with, you know, the stories and the things that are going on itself. That's my, my concern, and I would hope that we, we stand behind the residents here.
Are, are there, like, so are you organizing people to go to school board, or is there somebody, is there like a group going?
There's not any special person that's going in. We, we're all, all drivers, and parents are even talking to other parents. Teachers are talking because it is, it has affected the whole town. Another problem that we've noticed with this new company is the traffic up on Washington and North Street. It's, it's dangerous, there's, someone's going to get hit or there's going to be a bad accident in the winter.
Sure.
And these, a lot of things weren't taken into consideration when this company came in. It's like they moved in and didn't look at our traffic pattern, or it's like they don't, they don't care. And so they need to be aware that, you know, we're paying our taxes for service, and we demand, and we want a good service. And I, your question to the school board, they haven't spoken out against. There's thought that because our superintendent is from the area that the school bus, that there's, you know, now that's, I'm just being, I'm laying it out there because I want people to understand, these are some of the things that are going on. Whether it's true or not, I don't know. But what I do know is that this company is not fulfilling its contract. Our school board is not saying anything about it. And I, I don't understand that. They know that they're not fulfilling it, but they're sitting silently by, so.
Right, and they, they have a contract with the school board, right? So, so that, that would definitely be the school board that has to deal with that. I do, I do agree that anytime people, you know, in the city are hurting, right? We, we all always like to know. I know that we don't have any authority over that. I do know there are organizations in our town that do help organize, right? And that would be the best thing to do is organizing and going to school board and.
Well, yeah, I, I, I agree with what you're saying, but I think regardless of who or anyone else organizes, I feel that city council should make a statement of inquiry or something to let them know that we are aware of this and we like to see resolved.
Sure, has, has, so I guess my, my, my first, well, not my first, because I've asked a couple of questions, is that, does the school, is the school board aware that everyone is unhappy? Because the first, the first step wouldn't be us going to school board and saying, we're unhappy with this, right? It would be the citizens going to school board and saying, listen, we want better, we need better, and that would be organizing, and then.
They are very much, they are very much aware. I know it by the phone calls we still get at our office from parents that call because they don't have a number for GGNC, and then when they do call, no one answers. So we get the calls, yes, parents are aware. They stop me, as I say, when I'm picking up or unloading their kids, all those drivers are, and people are just talking about it. So yes, the school board is definitely aware of the, of the situation.
So is it, so what, what do you want today? You want to let people know that you're going to be at that meeting on the 23rd to speak?
No, no, what I want, what I want to do today, tonight, is I would like council to consider writing a letter of inquiry as to what's going on and what they're going to do.
Just asking school board what they're thinking about it?
No, bu- both.
Okay. Who do you want us to, I guess, do you want us to write a letter to who?
To the school board and to GGNC because they, they're receiving our tax dollars via the school board. You know, and I think we have a right, in my opinion, we have a right to question them as to why are you not fulfilling? Even as parents, you know, each one of us, or you're a parent, I'm a parent. So we have a right, I feel, to, to be told, why are they not fulfilling? And then as a, as city council, I feel that it's our right to find out for the residents here why they're not. So I would like a letter of inquiry from the city council to, to that effect.
This is a very slippery slope. I'm not debating the validity of your concerns. There, there's absolutely no question about that. But I don't think it is a role of council to be writing letters of inquiry, support, or anything else to other legislative bodies. This is a school board issue. They're the ones that signed the contract. We are the agent for their taxes, but they're not, it's not our money.
So you're telling me that if residents have a complaint about something else, that they don't have a right to come to city council and city council pick, look into it for them?
It's not our function. If, if they, if someone has a problem with streets.
Maybe it's not your function because you haven't done it. I think it's something, if it, if it's not your function, I think it should be.
We've had.
We represent the, the residents here, how can you say it's not something, I, I don't know, i- is there legally some reason that we can't do that?
It all goes down to exactly what you want to do. If you want to issue a joint statement from the board, you can do that. I don't know where that would go, to your point is that, you know, the school board has no obligation to respond to you anywhere.
I understand that.
So, I mean, if you're going to produce some sort of statement that can be voted on, that, because this is a statement of the council in support of the taxpayers or bringing forth some sort of statement, you can, you can do that, you can approve it. But right now, you're just talking about the idea, so I don't know exactly what you're going to put forth other than saying, let's come, let's bring some sort of statement that we're going to approve together at the next session. But right now, we don't have anything to vote on other than.
There are at least three other townships and part of the fourth. Well, actually, more than that, in Crawford Central School District. Why is every other body, every school district is suffering from this company. I, I understand, but what I'm saying is, are the Vernon Supervisors, the Westmead Supervisors, the Union, and Wayne Township Supervisors?
I have not, I, you know what, I don't live there, I don't deal with them, I don't hear from them. I'm talking about what I hear from the people here in Meadville. But I can tell you, I'm quite sure that, that they're suffering too. If they want to reach out, if, maybe, maybe that's what they need, is to hear someone else saying, hey, look, we're tired of this, and they're going, well, we're tired of it too. Maybe then that might coax other people into, other districts into saying something. But someone's got to take the initiative.
And individually, you can take the initiative.
And I, and I'll say it, and I'll stick with it. I feel that that's something, I don't know what or how we should word it, but I feel that we as city council should make a statement or just, just inquiry about it. Ask questions, why, or hold them accountable. I don't understand why there's, you know, there's nothing legally that we're doing wrong. Why not ask, you know?
Okay, but by that logic, should we get together and write letters to the oil companies asking why Meadville gas prices are higher?
You know what, personally, yes, yeah, you know? If, if you want to, it's true, but yeah, I mean, yes, somebody needs to, to lobby for that. But I'm talking about something right here, right now, that at least, you know what, at least the residents here would say, hey, you know what? City council is aware of it, they're looking into it. Not every day, you know, they're up there flipping us off and cussing at us. They don't understand the whole situation either. They're mad and frustrated about it, just as we are, you know? So I, I think we owe everybody some support in finding out exactly what's, even if we don't get a satisfactory answer. At least they know that we've reached out and we are not just letting this go idly away.
As, as individuals, if any of us want to write, and if all of us want to write, that's fine. I'm just saying it is not a function of this council.
Maybe, maybe if we start, started off doing like more face-to-face interaction with school board members, maybe even the supervisor, the Crawford Central Supervisor, Superintendent, I mean, yeah, maybe to start there first, and then. I mean, I would be willing to say, hey, because I have students who have had issues because they can't get to dance class because the buses aren't moving along. So, I mean, yeah, so maybe it would be better to start, like, just face-to-face as individuals, as council, is there, I mean, I could do.
Or individuals.
As individuals, you could, you want. I, I, what do you want to disclose that, my, my firm does represent Crawford Central School District, so as far as, you know, getting into the weeds of it, I don't want to do that. But individually, certainly, you can, you know, the citizens.
Yeah, just to understand, like, because I, I do think there's that non-awareness and like what to do, and, yeah.
Or to host, like, a listening session with resident, I don't know if that's necessarily like a thing that the city can do, but like, I don't, I don't, I don't know, that, that also feels slippery, but, but, right, like, because, because that's, that's where I'm coming from too, is like, I'm not, I'm not hearing this, and, and I, yeah, I, I certainly think that the concerns you're raising, Larry, are, I'm, I'm sure that people, that people are feeling that. If, if that hasn't been voiced at a, at a school board meeting yet, right? Can we help to create space where that can be voiced, where, where the school board members can, can hear that? And then we've got maybe more ground station, something, a letter or something.
Yeah, I don't think that's going to be, you know, that may be somewhat, I think a letter, again, is just as important as anything else. And I think maybe to a certain extent more important, because again, number one, it's going to be printed in the paper. So people, again, residents will see that we are taking this seriously. I think that's very important. You can do the other steps after, but I, I think it's to let them know, and to let the company know that, you know, the city council is aware of this. And then you can set up, hey, we need to talk about this, but I, I think putting the meetings and all that together is just going to be a waste of time.
So I think what, what some of the, the issue is, is that it feels like you're in it, right? Like, you, you know more than us, because we, we do not, right? So what it feels like is you're jumping, you want to jump right in the middle instead of starting at the beginning, where we have started with a lot of different things, right? Like you said, we start talking to people and individuals come to us, and then we, but they're, we're not in, in it deep like you are, right? Like you have been there from the beginning, so we're not hearing what, what you're, you're hearing. Jim, are you hearing much about the blessing?
You just said, I think, your tone.
Yeah, but, well. But you know what I mean, like, well, you start from the beginning, when it comes to organizing, you start from the beginning, right? And I think that no matter what happens now, often bodies don't listen to one person, right? They don't listen to, but when we get together and we speak together, and we show that we, we are together and we, we want the same outcome, that is when they start listening. I think that us coming, even as city council, right, to Crawford Central School District, we are not informed, you are, of course, but we are not informed. So when, when we're coming to them, we're saying, well, this is what happens. Well, then they come to us with a contract that we had not read, and it says this, that, or the other, they get this many, you know what I mean? Like, we're not, we don't know what's in that contract. How long is that contract? How, how many mistakes do they get? How much, you know, how many times do they get to hire another company? Like, those are things we don't know, so when we're writing a letter, we're, we're assuming that they are 100% at fault. And if we are not informed totally, then it looks like we have not done our work, right? It looks like we are organizing around misinformation, and we all know what misinformation does, right?
Well, you know what, I understand what you're saying.
So I think we should start at the beginning. I think we need to start at the beginning. I think that meetings are not a, a, a waste of time. I think that town halls are not a waste of time. I think that listening to people is not a waste of time. I think getting together is the right way to do it. And for us to write the letter, and, and, and I'm not against it, because I, I just don't know, right? These aren't things that people are telling me. I agree that the people in Meadville need to be supported. I agree that when people step forward, other people follow because they didn't have the confidence to go.
You don't have to have a meeting, or to set up a meeting, you can go.
Right.
And stand out in front of any one of these schools.
Right.
And, and listen to the parents and know that there's something wrong.
And that's the beginning. That's, that's the first step.
The way you want to deal with it and the way I deal, who want to deal with it is, is, is different. I feel a letter is the first way, I think that's, it's quick, I mean, it doesn't have to be done tomorrow or anything, but I think that's the way that we ought to go. And then, like I said, then set up meetings, let them explain themselves. They've already violated the contract from day one. That in itself is reason that they, they should have been questioned by now.
Right, I haven't seen the contract, I don't know the issues, again, that you know. And, and I think that that's, that's where our mis, you know, where, where we're not, we're not coming together. I do believe in, in, in the, the way things happen and getting together. But if, if standing outside of the high school is what you feel like people should be doing, then maybe that's what we should be doing, so we.
I'm sorry to interrupt. So it seems that there's not a consensus at this point to put a letter forward. Larry, I don't know if you want to, you and I can talk perhaps offline about maybe moving forward and seeing what we can come up with as the city. I don't know if that, that feels okay to you or not. I just, I just don't know that.
Keep going. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, what, yeah, I, I think that that might be the best. And, and then we can do our due diligence by talking to people if they, I mean, like. And, and then we can do our due diligence by talking to people if they, I mean, like, that, that's what we do is people, right? My son goes to the high school. I, I'd be happy to, to talk to some people. I just, it's just not something that I, I don't know. It's not that I'm against it, I just, I just don't know. I like to be informed. So maybe that's the best route to go. I don't know. I don't listen to anybody else.
Okay, resolution, uh, reconstitute police pension accounts. A resolution of the City of Meadville, Crawford County, and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania effectuating the reconstitution of police DC accounts into the TV features of the Police Pension Plan.
Um, can I have a motion to reconstitute police pension accounts?
So, Luke.
Second?
What second?
Discussion?
So due to the reinstatement of police pensions, um, this resolution, uh, should be passed to reinstate the police pension accounts. What this does is allows the city to transfer, um, the current monies of police officers who are under the defined contribution plan into a pension plan, into the defined benefit plan. Um, so that's what this resolution allows.
That's, that's all it says, basically, uh, when the, the former defined contribution plans are now defined benefit, legally we have to, uh, to, or to take action to transfer this fund zone. That's what this is.
And that's the letter that we have a copy of, Road's Law addressed to Tim.
Correct.
That's referring to. And we've done those other things at the bottom. Got Mission Square and Co. in Huntington coordinating.
Yeah, we've contacted them and of course they're waiting for the authorization from us and then we'll proceed with Mission Square to transfer the money.
Anybody have any other questions?
I have had some questions of our solicitor. Um, is, is it there on this resolution?
Uh, no, no, what, the thing we removed is not ready. That's, that's separate. That's, that can go up the address at the February meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, when, when do we use Road's Law?
Their pension.
All right, uh, roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Resolution adopting fee schedule for twenty twenty-three.
A resolution of the council of the City of Meadville adopting a fee schedule effective January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Um, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion?
So this is fairly similar to the twenty twenty-two fee schedule. There are three notable exceptions. Uh, the rental registration and licensing program, uh, fee has been included in there. That's the registration and inspection fee of seventy-six dollars, reinspection fee of sixty, and transfer registration fee of nine, uh, rooming house and bed breakfast residence. This is the hundred and twenty-five minimum fee. This has been reflected to incorporate the Allegheny, uh, properties. And then the park shelter reservation permit, um, was bumped up to sixty dollars from fifty. We did remove the, uh, twenty-five dollar deposit requirement as part of the fee schedule.
Does anybody have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. Actually, I have a lot of them, but, um, false alarm fees. I think that they probably should be higher because we incur a lot of costs. For, you have two free false alarms, then it's a hundred, a hundred fifty, and two hundred. I would think it should be more like three hundred, four hundred, and five hundred.
So, uh, we can, we should probably discuss that with the solicitor, because with any fee schedule, you have to be able to justify the fee you're charging. Um, so we would have to have a justification, uh, for that, so that, please, we can definitely look into those, but they would require discussion with the solicitor.
And then we would, what you're thinking is we'd amend this?
Correct.
With the new.
Yeah, okay.
There's also a charge for fire police services. I don't see anything about auxiliary police services.
We cannot legally charge for auxiliary police. We can just request that they donate.
Okay.
Most of the time we do, the people that use their services do donate.
What are trees on sidewalks? Are those potted trees that people put out? Is that the?
That, um, no, it's, it deals with trees in between the, the roadway and the sidewalk if people wish to plant them there.
Okay.
Do we, like, that easement?
It, cause it's a city right of way. There, there has to be approval to do that. If a private property owner wanted to plant in that strip, yes.
Interesting. Even if the shade tree commission does a program where, like, they, in the past, they have been. Shade tree commission, they must pay that fee.
The shade tree commission would be exempt as a body of the city from paying that fee.
Go ahead, Jimson.
Who pays for shopping cart retrievals? I mean, if someone steals them from a grocery store, are we adding insult to injury, charging the grocery store for their return?
I don't know that we do that in practicality anymore, to be honest with you.
No.
Yeah, I believe that the property maintenance guys just call the store and tell them to collect it.
Cause I've seen them collecting them and taking them themselves.
As long as we don't have to take it back, there is no fee incurred.
All of the responsive service fees and equipment service fees, um, when, when does that come into play? Is that what we use for third-party billing of insurance or like?
Are you, um, the fire ones?
Yeah, like, do people get a bill for, for addressing fire?
So that is, um, the responsive service fees, that's if we are loaning equipment out or utilizing it for any other purpose, like if somebody, um, I believe when like the library needed to use the aerial ladder to do something.
Okay, so something that isn't an emergency service that would come up.
Correct, yes.
Do we just like let anybody like run out?
I, I mean, I'm just wondering, because it's kind of a cool thing. I was just, I'm like, what a great service we have that people could use.
It's at the fire chief's discretion.
Okay, I just, I don't know, it just sounds like a cool service.
Yes, for four hundred dollars, you too.
What a way to create some revenue, is what I'm saying, not stuff. I don't, all right, sorry. Uh, keep going, Jim, that's all.
Uh, there also, we have street opening repairs, but we have curb restoration fees also. Is that separate?
I do not believe that we have anything for curb restoration. We just, um, there are curb, if, if the curb is disturbed as part of the street opening, that is factored into the street opening fee.
Okay.
Um, this is, Jim, are you still asking questions?
Uh, no, well, not right now. I might find more.
I just had a quick question that's really not about this. Um, you know, well, it's about this, but not, when he said curb, you know, restoration, you know, the gutter, right, that's connected to the curb? What, like, whose responsibility is that to, to fix? I'm just, just a quick.
It depends on the ro, what road, um, it's on.
Okay.
And we, so if it's a PennDOT route, we do work with PennDOT.
Oh, that's what you mean. I was like.
We do, we do work with this PennDOT, so like Park Ave, um, you know, there are some considerations for new, in, they're called inlets.
Right, okay.
Um, and tops, and so.
They're not called gutters?
No.
They're not?
Um, and, uh, so we work with PennDOT to, to, you know, kind of share the cost of replacement or help with the cost of replacement. Um, now, if it's city-owned street, that would fall under our responsibility as the, as the city.
I did want to note that when I said gutters, everybody knew what I was talking about.
I only, I only learned that they're called inlets in my.
Right, someone, other people knew that what I was talking about.
I did see another one on page four. Now, I'm going to go against this because of the rental registration fees, but if you're gonna have rental registration fees.
Yeah.
I think you ought to at least specify that it is a biennial fee.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
Thanks, cause I.
By civil law.
Right. Gretchen had mentioned that earlier, so I, I, yeah.
We can make that change.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Why is there a dance hall? As an owner of a dance hall, I would like to see that easier, because you have the studios and martial arts studios, don't have a dance hall fee that I pay for you.
Well, a dance hall.
You have a dance studio.
Yeah, you have a studio. Do you pay that?
Yeah, I pay a dance hall fee to own a dance studio in Meadville. You pay a dance hall fee.
I feel like a dance hall fee was like.
We can look at that as a, an aged ordinance.
And I'm not Miss Kitty. I don't have a student.
Fairly certain it dates as far back as the circus and menagerie one that we recently done with, so.
It's unfortunate that you've been paying. I mean, that seems to me like a nightclub, right? Like a dance hall, like a place you go to dance.
It would have.
It says dance instruction and hall lessons, but I pay, you pay the whole thing. It's the whole thing.
So.
I get a cert, a certificate in the mail that says I can operate a dance hall.
Yeah, and I mean, you can see a public dance or a ball permit is two dollars.
Yeah.
That doesn't even cover the time it takes to talk to somebody about getting sent through it. Um, that's something we can look at. Like I said, that's just the ordinance that's been on the books for some time.
Yeah. Like the high school and middle school should be paying us two dollars every time we host it.
They really should.
Well, I guess it's a private, is it a private dance? No. Neither.
Um.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Roll call.
Uh, McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
Um, resolution approving and adopting environmental advisory committee bylaws.
A resolution of the council of the City of Meadville approving and adopting the bylaws of the environmental advisory committee.
Motion?
Second.
So per the EAC's enabling ordinance, council needs to approve their bylaws. That's why it is before you. Uh, these bylaws have been vetted by legal counsel and adopted by the EAC.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Um, resolution authorize action, CoStar's salt participation agreement.
A resolution of the council of the City of Meadville authorizing Public Works Support Coordinator, Jamie Smith, to enter into the attached salt contract participation agreement via the Pennsylvania Department of General Services CoStars program.
Uh, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
So Public Works purchases salt through the CoStars, the state's cooperative purchasing program. This allows the city to leverage contracts established by the Department of General Services to cost effectively and efficiently, um, and identify suppliers to do business with this contract that before used for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four season. We've already purchased last year at this time for this season. Uh, this is for two thousand tons, um, same as last year. You'll note that there's no pricing listed for this contract. This is a contract essentially just agreeing to sign on to the state's salt contract and pay whatever price the state negotiates when they go out to bid. Um, the price per ton will know in August or so what that price is. This season's price was fifty-eight point, fifty-eight dollars seventeen cents per ton. Um, it is up about twenty dollars from last, the season prior, per ton.
Up how much?
It was twenty, about twenty dollars more this season than last.
Um, does anybody have any questions?
That's a ton. It's a lot, so.
Yeah.
Um, but we still think that, right, the state is getting the, that's the best deal.
That's, that's very, yes. Any other questions? Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Uh, resolution authorize signatures, engineer contract, Porter Consulting Engineering. A res, sorry.
Did, did you want me to finish yours? I mean, either way, we're reading it, we're, I just, um, this is for PC and City of Meadville, Bicentennial Park seventeen, uh, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, sorry. Go ahead.
A resolution of the council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on an agreement for professional services between the City of Meadville and Porter Consulting Engineers, PC, for bicentennial park improvements in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion?
Uh, scope of work is outlined in the contract provided to you under appendix two. Um, includes pre-design programming, schematic design, sign development, construction documents and permitting and building, uh, and bidding, I'm sorry. Um, funding for this project was a grant received by the city through DCM.
So, sorry. If anybody has.
Yes, I do. May I?
Yes.
May I?
Great.
Um, uh, so that, scope of work with Porter Consulting, that makes sense. Scope of work in terms of the park, like?
Correct, so they will actually engage in the design portion of this work. Um, we don't know, there's a conceptual design, but not a final design, uh, which is what this contract would put together. Uh, then, once that occurs, it will go out to bid. Porter Consulting will put it out to bid for us, um, for the contractors to actually do the design work.
Um, it's, uh, I think I saw in the contract something about the design team or the, the project team, um, uh. I have a question about it, and I'm trying to think about how to phrase them. Uh, I think maybe like, can a member of council be on that or community engagement or planning zone? I'm just, I'm wondering what that design team, uh, from the, on the city's end looks like and what it can look like.
Uh, which clause are you looking at?
Um, it was in the scope of engineering, but it just called out a, um, I think it called out a design team. Maybe it was just City of Meadville representative, right?
So I can tell you that myself.
Project team, yeah.
Myself and Jason Rogario are undertaking the management of this project and this grant. Um, so we will be actively working with Porter Consulting through the design process and the engagement of contractors, so.
We, we can, there is an option, right, for, I think, to be, to work in some sort of involvement of council on this. Um, we can talk about that. We probably want to talk to Ashley about that, um, moving forward, but I think that something could be worked out.
Yeah, um, yeah, I just, I just saw, uh, it's one, 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 uh, that, that calls out that, uh, Porter Consulting will meet. City of Meadville representatives to divine, to define the project team. Um, I think it makes sense that it is staff, but even if we just can pinpoint together, like, points along the design process where we can have public input or something like that, maybe it's community engagement subcommittee. And that's.
Does anybody have any more questions?
Timeline on bicentennial improvements. Does this cover that?
It, so ideally, we would have bicentennial completed by the end of the year. Um, this is grant funds that we applied for two years ago. Um, so we're, we're getting up to the point where we need to get them extended.
Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Uh, resolution authorize the signatures, engineering contract, Porter Consulting here, PC, and City of Meadville, Heidi Cooper Park, ninety-five thousand.
A res.
I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll read faster. A resolution of the council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on an agreement for professional services between the City of Meadville and Porter Consulting Engineers, PC, for Heidi Cooper Park improvements in the amount of ninety-five thousand.
Motion. Second.
Discussion?
Uh, the scope of work is attached in the request for proposal document that was sent out to a number of different engineering firms and solicited before, from a number of engineering firms. Um, Porter Consulting was the only engineering firm to submit a response, uh, for us. Um, the funding for this in the amount of ninety-five thousand dollars is coming from CDV to money.
Does anybody have any questions?
I'll just make similar requests at the meeting, I guess, although I, I recognize that a big portion of, like, there has already been a lot of work. There was the community engagement. There were several meetings, there was. Yeah. To keep the public informed, people are excited, uh, so I think.
Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Uh, public comment on the agenda.
I don't still.
Hello?
Hello.
Good evening, council. Hello here. Um, just an update on our, uh, situation with Welltower in, uh, Kalmar, Connect Fifty-Five. Uh, I'm a, my name is Bill Holman, H O H M A N N. Uh, and my, uh, senior resident. Uh, and my, uh, senior resident at Connect Fifty-Five, uh, Pine Street Commons. Uh, we've been working with the Crawford County United, Pennsylvania United. Uh, the city council has been very helpful, uh, in our endeavor in trying to get a fair and equitable, uh, rent. The rent, uh, skyrocketed to thirty, forty, between thirty and forty percent. Uh, recently, they, uh, increased the, uh, garage rent by twenty-five percent. Uh, they increased the, uh, the amount you pay for a dog or a cat by seventy-five percent. Um, they, we've been in contact with them, uh, trying to get, uh, negotiations with them to sit down and review their program, you know, that they have bestowed on us, and to no avail. We're working with the state attorney general, uh, office in Erie, that's, uh, Brandon Bingo, and, uh, Emily Watson, and they're working on a information, they're gathering information on Welltower and Calmar and this situation, mostly pertaining to amenities, because that's, you know, basically, uh, due to the Consumer Protection Act, they can, uh, they can do, they have some power to force them to, um, come forth with the amenities that they promised, they advertised, that they have not. But, uh, at this point, a couple of weeks ago, well, last week, uh, a lawyer and another representative from Calmar, uh, Welltower owns, uh, say, our building, uh, but Calmar is still the managing, uh, body that, uh, takes care of it. Uh, they sent corporate lawyers down last Thursday, unannounced, uh, to speak to, on an ad hoc basis, to speak to residents who were available and wanted to sit down with the lawyers and get a better explanation from them, of which to no avail, the, the thing, uh, response, if you don't want to pay the rent, or you don't like the rent, then move. You know, um, the, it's a private corporation in the state of Pennsylvania. You don't have any, you know, state ordinances or regulations for private landlords. But they won't even sit down and, and negotiate and discuss any, any part of it. Uh, they just need the money. And Welltower is telling Calmar, this is what you have to do. You have to bring these apartments up to the national average. Well, Meadville is, you know, not Pittsburgh, it's not New York City, it's not Chicago, you know, it's not Buffalo. You know, and so it's, uh, they're not in line. Uh, I had asked, invited Krista Gier to, uh, come tonight and, uh, because she does have documentation on the, uh, rents in this area of the different, uh, renting corporations and private landlords, which they put out a package each, uh, that they have there. Uh, Tricia Ortley supplied a package to me from Active Aging, and it lists all the different landlords, lists all the different facilities in Crawford County, in Meadville area, and what their apartment, uh, rates are. And ours is a step above that, but that's the plan for Welltower and then Calmar. But the people who did speak with the lawyers, uh, last Thursday, two of them came to move our apartment right after they had their interview with the lawyers stating that, uh, you know, there's no movement, they're not going to budge, they're just going to, if you don't like it, move. You know, can't afford it, move. This is what they have to do. They have to show the banks that they need the money, that they have the money coming in. At, at the time, uh, one of the, uh, people who were being interviewed there by the lawyers, uh, the lawyer stated, well, I guess you're, you're pretty dissatisfied with us, you know, in, in this situation here. Well, we've decided we're not going to renew your lease. So we're a little bit upset about that, and a lot of people, what group we had there who were participating in trying to get fair and equitable rent now are gun-shy. And they're afraid of reprisals from corporation, and they don't want their names mentioned, they don't want to be part of anything. So what was, or could have been a twenty to thirty, uh, group of people who were interested in, in working on this with us are down to three or four. And it's going to stay that way. So we're, we're go- we're looking for, you know, avenues, uh, any help that we can get, or, or suggestions, or whatever, you know, would be appreciated. Um, we are working with a investigative reporter out of Chicago, uh, with a periodical that's called The Lever. Uh, and we're also, uh, had an interview with a, another investigative reporter last week from Newsweek and, and in New York, and she, she's doing an article also on excessive rents. So we don't know what will come of that. I've emailed them, uh, asked for, you know, an update on their situation, but haven't heard back yet on that.
Uh, thank you, Bill, for, for bringing that back to us and, and keep giving us those, those, um, updates on what's going on there. Uh, we certainly support you, and we've been in the fight with you the entire time. So thank you so much for being here.
Are there any questions?
And continue fighting.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
What is the current occupancy rate and number of finished units, there, as a percentage of the whole?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six percent finished units?
No.
Percent.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six units, which is twenty-five percent.
Okay.
Ninety-two units that they have not finished. And now they put a sign up saying open, I think it just went up yesterday or today. Uh, and the rumor is, we don't get any updates from management or anything, that in eight weeks, they'll be opening up the other ninety-two units for occupancy, but we don't know that for a fact. No, we're not given that information. But it's a good question. I mean, you have to check. We, we don't know though.
Okay, thank you.
So there's a hundred and twenty-eight units, of which only thirty-six have been, uh, available to rent for the past two years. They've been there, most of us have been there two years, you know, as of this month and next month.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I do. Do you, do you think AARP would be, I was just thinking, if they have like a, AARP, just because they have a lobby, a pretty strong voice, like nationally, like maybe, and I know in looking at Calmar online, they don't rate well, the Connect Fifty-Five, it's horrible reviews. So I was just wondering, I was just wondering if you'd looked into that.
Well, we've worked with, uh, Crawford County United and Pennsylvania United.
Yeah.
You know, the resources that they've afforded us, you know, we are looking into things that these companies are involved in and trying to find a sweet spot someplace that we could, you know, try to, you know, pinpoint and maybe, you know, hit a nerve so they'll sit down and do something and, and, you know, be more fair with it. Other, other Connect Fifty-Fives only got a six percent increase in their leases this past year. We get a, we get a thirty to forty percent increase. And if you do the math, you know, they'll come back and say, well, you just got a social security increase of eight point seven percent. That's wonderful. Last year, you got a fi- a five point eight percent. Well, that's great too, but do you look at the other side of the coin? We get, you know, nine point one percent? You know, uh, inflation last year, now you have six point five percent? I'm sorry.
No, you're-
I'm tired too.
I just know there are a couple of other folks, I think, on that list. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Thanks so much, Bill.
Thank you.
Uh, Wayne?
Yeah, Mike explains a little different. There's a big problem down there at Island Hills, it's not being taken care of properly. There's bedbugs everywhere down there. This guy that came in to do the bedbugs stole my aid. There was only three in my chair. And when I come in, she showed me, it took us five hours to clean the chair. You know, they, and then the maintenance man goes around and grabs that I got bedbugs. And when you try to tell Vanessa something, she's too worried about prettying up the place, so. It's just getting ridiculous down there anymore. And it's just aggravating me.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, the guy's supposed to come in and spray again, and I'm going to take him by the nose and show him where to go. And maintenance can stay out. I am done with this place.
Uh, I'm sorry you're going through that, Wayne. Um, thank you again for coming here and, and bringing that to our attention.
I got pictures of it. It's just, yeah, and there's no way that was three. But he had to have seen it.
Yeah.
They're just not doing anything properly. He's just wants the sec- job secure, you know, coming back. That's my nature to fight them, not doing anything right down in that building. You can't spray one apartment on one floor and another on the other floor. It doesn't work. You're just chasing it from one apartment to the other. They're coming through the pipelines, through the holes in the wall for the pipes. You, you have to do every apartment on one floor before you go to the next, and they're just not doing it. And I, I don't like the idea of the maintenance man telling everybody that, you know, I got bedbugs, or somebody else got bedbugs. That's not right. What goes on in your apartment stays in the apartment. But you, you can't tell Vanessa or Adam because they just don't care. She's too worried about beautifying the place. Or, you know, not checking up on the, you know, the maintenance or checking up on the bug guy. There's no way I had three in that chair. You know, I had a whole city of them.
Yeah. I'm really sorry about that, Wayne. Um, again, thank you for keeping us informed of what, what's going on, and we're sorry that you're-
It's getting ridiculous. The head that runs down there does not know how to do anything right. I don't think she's qualified for that position.
Does anybody have any questions for Wayne? Um, thank you, Wayne. Joe?
Thanks for your-
Uh, yeah, so I know it's been a long night. I won't take, I'll try to be really brief. Uh, I just kind of want to follow up on what Bill was talking about, about what's happening with, at Connect Fifty-Five. Um, I mean, what he mentioned as far as, uh, the residents who were called into the meeting with the corporate lawyer, uh, and then the lawyer telling them that they're not going to renew their lease because they've been speaking out, because they have problems with the facility, that's retaliation, right? We should call it what it is. That's retaliation by that company. And just to remind you and provide some context, so like Bill said, uh, Calmar's the managing company, Welltower owns the building. Uh, Welltower is one of the largest real estate investment trusts in the country, one of the largest real estate companies. Uh, you can look them up on Wikipedia. They have assets upwards of thirty-four billion dollars. They're making over four point seven billion dollars in revenue every year, right? So this is a company making four point seven billion a year, and they're raising rents on senior citizens in Meadville thirty to forty percent so they can make a little bit more money. And then when those residents who can't afford that rent, they're going to have to figure out, hey, can I pay, am I going to go short on medicine this month so I can pay my rent? Am I going to go short on food so I can pay my rent? They speak out, they speak to the news media, they come to city council meetings, they ask for your help. What happens? They get retaliated against. So I guess I'm here to ask you, Gretchen was saying, hey, reach out to AARP. I'm here to ask you, city council, is this acceptable? Is this acceptable that this happens in your city? Because you can do something about it. There are things you can do, right? We know this happens. We know what happens at Connect Fifty-Five. We heard it right now. We know what happens all across the city. We know residents, tenants have come here and spoke to you, city council, to talk about the problems they've had with their apartments. They've been evicted. We know people call the fire department to report code, code violations, and they get evicted. I know you've heard those stories. One of the reasons that happens, like Bill was alluding to, is that there are no statewide protections in Pennsylvania for renters who are retaliated against for simply exercising their rights, right? Whether that's a right to, uh, safe housing, decent housing, affordable rent, there's no protections, right? Um, Andy Bacalio, who is a landlord in town, who I know during the rental inspection program, he came here a couple of times. He had the Attorney General Consumer Guide to Landlord and Tenant's Rights. His point was, hey, there are all these rights here, uh, you know, tenants just need to, you, we just need to realize that, uh, and tenants need to be made aware that they have these rights. Uh, that document, I looked it up, that document, the, again, it's the Attorney General's Consumer Guide to Tenant and Landlord Rights. The section on retaliation, here's what it says. There is no general provision in Pennsylvania law that prohibits landlords from retaliating against tenants for exercising their rights under Pennsylvania's landlord-tenant laws, but your local municipal government, whether it's a township, a borough, or city council, may enact those laws to prohibit retaliation by landlords. So the Attorney General document is saying it's up to you, right? The responsibility is on you. So again, my question is, is this acceptable? Are you willing to actually provide protections for people like Bill and residents at Connect Fifty-Five or other renters in the city who face this kind of retaliation? I know you'll get blowback if you try to do something. I know it will have political consequences. I'm sure Jim will vote against it, but it's up to you guys to stand up and do something about it. So that's, that's all I'm saying.
If I recall, there was a retaliation clause in the ordinance that was passed.
There is mention of retaliation in that, um, but it does keep the city out of any kind of interaction with that, um-
And I think it's specific to code the inspections.
Correct, it is tied to that.
And, and, uh, originally, it was put forward with, I think, a twelve-month window that was significantly reduced as, as well. So it was-
Correct.
It was watered down, essentially, uh, from, from what we put forward.
It was watered down and kept the city out of it.
Correct.
Okay. Double Y.
Just, just, I'm, I'm just, I just want to be clear that it, so it's, it's no. That it, I know there was, it was in there-
It exists, and tenants can use it.
And then, and then it was taken out, basically, watered down, taken out substantially.
It's, it's their and tenants can use it as, right, to, 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 in their, in their defense and if, if, right, if they, if they do, uh, try to, you know, appeal eviction or take an eviction in front of, um-
Correct. So if they went to court to challenge their eviction, they could cite that section, um, of, of the ordinance. Uh, when I say it keeps the city out of it, I mean that the city would not, you know, testify, right, in any kind of behalf, uh, one way or the other on it.
I guess what I'm saying, and I think what the Attorney General Guide is alluding to, is providing a kind of citywide protection that's broad and covers any instance of landlord retaliation. I think the, the provision that was in the rental inspection program, like Autumn is saying, was more specific to that particular ordinance and the instances of the registration, the biennial inspection, and any, any resident who makes a complaint, right, as a result of that, right? So this would be, what I think that we're thinking about is something that's much broader and much stronger than that. Again, it's a question of whether you move on, allow this kind of retaliation to happen in the city or not, and what are the strongest protections that we can provide for renters?
Does anybody have any questions for Joe?
Oh, no.
Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. And that's, that's all I have for public comments. Let's go with council member statements. Jim?
Thank you. I'd like to take a couple of moments to thank Meadville Fire Department, all the area volunteer departments who provided mutual aid, the ambulance service, and anybody else who saved lives on North Cottage Street. Lives are not replaceable, buildings are. And there were some heroic efforts there. So we'd like to express the community's appreciation to all those people. Thank you.
Gretchen?
I guess I would just like to, I've never gone to a Martin Luther King dinner, and that was really quite a cool celebration to be at. I really felt like community and that there's a lot of possibility there. It's just a lot of hope. Larry, I want to thank you for speaking out so strongly about the busing situation because as Jamie pointed out, you're in the middle of it, and I'm just on the edge of kids not coming to dance because they're, they're not being picked up. So it's kind of, you know, on the surface or whatever. But I also am hopeful in, in supporting your point of view. And I will definitely contact people who I know, just because I think the more we know, the better we do. I mean, the obvious thing there. Thank you, Bill, and thank you, Wayne, for speaking. And thank you, Joe, for just kind of putting that, I like the period on the end there very strongly because I do think it's important that we feel that our, that all of us can be safe here in our housing and not be at the risk of just, of things rising, pricing, just the whole thing. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mary?
Yeah, thanks, everyone that came tonight. And I'd just like to just reiterate, please come to the school board meeting. Make your voices heard. We've got, we have to hold each other accountable. Only way for things to get better and things to get corrected is if we're willing to hold people and everyone accountable. So please come to the meeting and voice your concerns.
Yeah, I, I wanted to say, so I wanted to share about, right, just this, this weekend, it was a beautiful time. It was an MLK Dinner Monday, but right, like Friday. I think Friday night, I went to an art gallery opening and saw live music at Julian's and went to an event at the Council on the Arts. And it just felt, town felt vibrant and, and good and alive, and people were connecting with each other. And I, yeah, I feel real tensioned, like I, just being so proud of that and enlivened by that, while also knowing that, like, neighbors are struggling, right, to hear Bill and Wayne, right, to hear you all come and share your stories. Like, I want people to love this town and to feel like excited and proud to live here and to be able to enjoy all of the things that this town has without the fear of, of not being able to afford the place they're going to live or if it's safe or habitable, right? I, so I'm just feeling, I'm sitting in that tension right now of just loving this place, choosing to live here and wanting other people to be able to make the same choice, to choose to be here. And so, yeah, I guess I answered Joe's rhetorical question. No, I don't think it's acceptable that, that folks are retaliated against for trying to make the place they're choosing to live a place that they can actually, that can be a choice, right, they can afford it, and that it's a safe place, it's safe. So, yeah, I guess I'm just reaffirming a commitment to make this a good place for people, for my neighbors, my friends, for the people I care about here. Because I'm glad that it is for me.
Absolutely. I am not going to be real original. I'm going to reiterate just about everything everybody has said up here. Jim, yes, I want to thank everybody that was involved in saving lives, even, even our pets, our cats, right? Excuse my language, but we have a totally badass fire department, and they do their job, right? We have people who care here, that want to make safety a priority. And so I guess like thumbs up, we have an awesome picture of a fire chief, or a fireman and a police chief, right, with the fire hose. So talk about people caring about people's lives. That happens here. That's here in Meadville, right? Yes, with Gretchen, there's things to do. The MLK thing was this weekend. I attended a couple, and ours was pretty awesome. Lots of people showed up, lots of people who care about our community, again, that are willing to put forth the effort to make this a place that we all want to live and that people have less barriers and are able to, you know, find their joy and their passion. Where Larry is concerned, I think that the cool thing about being in America, being in Meadville, there are people here willing to organize, there are people here listening. And, you know, power to the people, power to the public. Let's, let's get on board and again, make people's lives easier, right? Let's, let's make it easier for those parents and try to fix some of those, those problems. And with Autumn, I happened to do lots of stuff in town this weekend, and I do not accept the people who insist that there's nothing to do here in town because my weekend was full with gallery openings, with Listful Meads, with the MCA, with live music at Julian's, right? With, you know, there are all of these things to do and these opportunities to create something to do. If you find that you don't have something to do, Meadville is a place that magic happens if you want to be here. So get on board and make things happen. We're all here to help. And, and very cool, very magical things happen. And if you want to make this place the place you want to live, if you want to live somewhere where you are happy and able to find your joy, this is the place. But it may, we may need you to put some work in. So come to us, let's do the work together, and let's live in the place we, we want to be, where we can find our joy, where we have, are able to live out our passions while helping our neighbors and making sure they are also, their barriers are taken away. So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn this, this meeting. Is that okay? Discussion? Roll call.
McNay?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.